Good afternoon. Welcome to the March 24 City Council Regular Work Session. We're going to continue with review of the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget, and I will turn to City Manager, Ms. Vercheck.
Thank you. Mayor, Members of Council, first and foremost, thank you for accommodating this new seating arrangement. We are doing our very best to comply with the CDC social distancing rules. I also want to thank all of the staff and any visitors in the audience who are also being very compliant with those during these very interesting times. Before we start walking through the budget document, I wanted to go over just very briefly responses to the questions that were raised at your work session last Tuesday. You have a copy of those in front of you. There were three questions, one regarding firefighter pay structure and the reworked pay structure proposal. I stated last week that we staff needed a chance to review that before we pass that along to you. We have provided a five-year history of fire and EMS calls and average response time to emergency incidences and the per-child placement cost for foster care for a worst-case scenario for a child coming into the system. So staff has worked pretty hard in getting all of this information together for you. If you have any questions after you have an opportunity to review it, by all means, please let either me or Reed or Donna know. Second, before we start moving into the budget document, council is very curious, as I totally understand, as are we, regarding what the projections look like for the rest of fiscal year 2020 regarding the impact of the pandemic as well as fiscal year 2021. Chief Financial Officer Donna Witt is going to present to you our first blush look at the rest of fiscal year 2020. She will go over some assumptions with you and what that landscape looks like. And then, in the next few weeks, we will have some revisions based on other assumptions regarding fiscal year 2021 on both the revenue side and corresponding expenditure reductions. So, Donna.
Thank you. It does work. First of all, let me just walk through a few assumptions. Obviously, this is best-case scenario. I did not provide a copy to you, so you can sit up here. I can get that to you later if you want it.
This is best-case scenario?
Well, this is very conservative, but it's not perfect, and it's not going to be perfect because we really are, obviously, with any revenue projections, as time marches on, you know more. So we've worked with the Commissioner of Revenue and just really tried to see kind of where we are and where we think we'll be through the end of this fiscal year.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that we... Because you did say it's our best-case scenario, so could... So this is a conservative projection of the revenues for the rest of the year?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And a conservative meaning you're erring on the side of...
Of caution.
Of caution.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
It's our best guess. Let me put it that way. For each major revenue source, there are different assumptions based on what we know today. So obviously, what we know about sales tax is going to be different from what we know about meals tax and that type of thing. This assumes today's city employment. So as we look forward to maybe some changes that we might have to make as far as keeping people on staff, look at furloughs, any kind of changes in expenses, the value of each day of payroll is approximately $100,000 to $125,000, but that excludes the Police Department, the Fire Department, Department of Social Services, Emergency Services, Refuge Collection. So we looked at those that would have to continue to work. So again, we're not saying that's where we're going. We're just saying we've looked at a whole lot of things. The City Manager has put out a hiring freeze, so we're not doing any hiring unless it's in a public safety position. And we've also put in place non-essential spending freezes. So we're really trying to reduce our expenditures as well as look at where we think these revenue projections are going to be. And then, as we look at available resources that can possibly put back this money, I'm only looking at resources from fiscal year 2020. So the 2021 budget as proposed, I've not taken any funding sources from that. It stands as it is right now. Of course, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be looking at further out those revenue assumptions. So for sales tax, the good news about sales tax, you will see that we're estimating we're down about $921,000 February through June. But the good news is, right now, through January, we're up about $750,000 compared to budget. So that's helping buffer the loss here. So we're thinking through June, we'll be down about $175,000, $176,000. Now, the good news from this is, in working with Commissioner of Revenue even today, he's got early numbers for February, and they're going to be probably more than budget. February is another good month. As you look at our July through January, the economy was really rolling. I mean, we bumped up our revenue projections for fiscal year 20 based on historical averages, what we were seeing in the economy, and really expected to do well, and we're exceeding those expectations. So we are really in a great place through January. It looks like that's going to continue through February. It's March that really is our big concern going forward. So for sales tax, again, the additional revenues that we've seen July through January is helping buffer our loss here.
Donna?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Why are we assuming that revenues for March will remain the same as projected?
Well, what we're seeing is a lot of people are rushing to the grocery store, they're buying on Amazon, people are stocking up, and we do have a half of the month that was business as usual. And so this last week, then continuing, it looks like people are really trying to stock up. So we think that we're going to be about flat for March.
Thank you. Ms. Witt, how many of our sales tax revenues derive from meals? Roughly?
It's not as much as you would think.
Okay. So, but you factored that into your equations?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Okay. But it's not as much as we think? That's great.
Right.
Thanks.
If Mitch were here, I bet he could answer that off the top of his head.
I didn't need him to. As long as it was factored in, that's fine.
Yeah, we did factor that in. Meals tax, of course, is completely different. July through January compared to budget, we're up about $140,000. So that's good news. That does help buffer this. But you can see, in March, we think we're going to be down about 20% compared to budget, and then April and May, about 60%. A good portion of our restaurants are open. They're doing carryout. I've talked to several of them as I've eaten out, and they're telling us that business is doing pretty well. They may be down 30% or so, but people are really there to support them, and so they're seeing their business continue. So we're thinking April and May, down about 60%. When we look back to the recession of 2009, and it was like the lights went off in Lynchburg, and we really had to figure out that new normal, our meals tax never dipped. It flattened out. We didn't see a lot of growth, but year over year, it never reduced, which I think, you can't really compare it till now because we do have some restaurants that are closed, but people like to eat out. People have been busy, they still go out to eat, they're trying to support our restaurants. So we don't think this is going to be a 90% loss. We're thinking this 60% is conservative. So we're hoping. June, we really are expecting, these projections are based on June starting to come back to normal. So that's why we have a 25% loss in June. Now, obviously, as this time marches on, we're going to be reviewing these to see if in June, you know, if towards the middle of May, if things aren't getting back to normal, then we're going to have to revise these again. But for right now, we really believe, listening to everything that's going on, that hopefully in June, we're projecting to start to be back to normal. But again, this is $2.2 million. This is a big chunk of loss.
I guess 2.3.
For six months, but overall, about 2.2. Yes.
Sorry, I keep gunning questions at you.
That's okay.
With the students not being in school, the vast majority of the students not being in school, you all took that in consideration when you did the reductions?
Yes.
And no graduations?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a biggie.
No.
And you'll really see that in this one. In lodging tax, I talked with...
Just to add, I take a lot of the orders. It's not just the restaurants that are on Words Road, for example, with the students because Sedexo has a ton of meals on campus, which has a ton of tax that is paid on meals tax, so, yeah.
Makes a big impact.
Yeah.
Lodging tax is worse. So we were up a little bit, and we were about flat to budget. We were up about $14,000. The good news is, we were up about $60,000 through January over last year. So this, we were doing well. February is not really one of our busiest months. March, thankfully, at the beginning of March, the ASUN Tournament for Men was at Liberty University, so we had, you know, a couple of weeks of really good hotel sales there. But we don't believe that the hotels in April and May are probably going to have anybody at all. I mean, we're just saying, they're saying they're at maybe 6%. You know, they're really down. I've worked with Marjette today, and her staff is monitoring this with me and helping me get some numbers. But again, this is really where we think we are, that people are not traveling, they're not going to be coming into Lynchburg to see their students. It's just, it's going to be very different. So we're anticipating about an $800,000 loss here. I wish I had better news.
It is for the actual people.
Yeah.
The people that were paying those bills, that were the fact that they're losing 100% of their income overnight. I mean, that is what is terrible. So this is, I mean, you know, it's, hey, we're getting less revenue. Well, good, we spend less. But the people that are losing 100% of their income, that is devastating. You're not talking about that.
It is. I mean, it's not good. Amusement tax is another one that's awful. It's not one of our biggest revenues, but it is one that is based on our economics and activity in Lynchburg. And you will see, again, for March, I mean, for April and May, we're projecting no revenue. Everything's been canceled. The governor has shut down every entertainment form, so therefore, we do not anticipate these revenues. And again, we think and are hoping in June that some of this is going to start coming back. So, but then, again, overall, this is about $210,000. It's not one of our biggest revenues, but again, it's one of our economic drivers that we look at to judge everything else. But because everything's been shut down, you know, we're not going to get this revenue. So when you put all of this together, we're anticipating about $3.4 million loss, which in $194 million general fund budget doesn't sound like a lot, but the fact that it's coming right at the end of the fiscal year doesn't give us a lot of time to turn this around to maintain a balanced budget. So we need to really be looking at this. But, so, potential sources to replace lost 2020 revenue, and again, this is not looking at anything that we've used to fund 2021. 2021, at this point, stands on its own. We have about $700,000 left in the reserve for contingencies. We've estimated our managed vacancy at about $2.2 million, and this is general fund only. The enterprise funds are standing on their own. We've got, you know, we worked so hard to get above our 10%, that's about $800,000 that's in our unassigned fund balance for general fund that's above our 10%. We put the $1.2 million aside for the task force on the future of pre-K through 12 education and beyond. You know, don't want to touch it, but worst-case scenario, these would be funds that would be available to keep things going. We've got $400,000 in the long-term on-time debt financing reserve, and there's about almost $1.4 million in the GLTC reserve, and that's money that's been returned from GLTC. We had set that money aside for the city's cost of bus purchases in the future, so we had that money, we set it aside to be conservative. But worst-case scenario, if we had to use it, it's there and available.
That's local money, not federal money or state money?
It's local money. So this is about $6.7 million of available funds that, no, we don't want to dip into any of it, but worst-case scenario, this is some opportunity that we would be able to backfill some of this lost revenue.
After you. Do we have a sense of whether the state or federal entities will be providing any kind of assistance to localities?
Not at this point. I actually have a webinar on Friday with VDIM, so hopefully, maybe they'll start to tell us some things, but right now, we don't know.
Revenue, there hasn't been, it's not like, it's not like revenue, it's not like a storm or something that knocked out a bridge or something, so...
I should know if they're included in that $2 million, sorry, $2 trillion stimulus package that they're considering right now.
Well, we don't know at this point.
Who is it that I can't, so, you know, it's helicopter money, sorry. But you may be going into this, oh, hey, question's perfect. How are you finished? How about loss of revenue in other areas such as the airport?
Of course, Andrew is here. Their fund kind of stands alone, but, you know, should the general fund need to bail them out to keep them whole? I mean, these are potential sources of revenue as well. I think probably the good news is they still have companies paying leases for their hangars and that type of thing. I'm sure they're seeing some loss of revenue in rental cars and parking, that type of thing, but, and certainly, if you want to, he's going to give his presentation if we get that far, so I'm sure he can speak to that as well.
Any other revenue source, like ticketed revenue or user fees that we don't anticipate getting that's going to have a material impact?
Well, the good news is construction is rolling, and Kent White is here, he can speak to this. People are still submitting designs, they're still pulling permits, so it seems that the construction workers are still at work. We've even heard that some of people that have been laid off in our entertainment-type businesses are going to work for construction companies if they have that potential. So, but they are rolling, so that's good news. We want to keep them rolling.
Any further questions, Councilwoman Wilder?
Thank you for the information. This is very helpful. But just so I can understand the process, when a city has like a catastrophe or something of that nature, is there another set of reserve funds or ready funds that we've set aside, or how does that work? Or is that just the information you've provided today?
Well, that's why we have the 10%, and at least 10% in our general fund unassigned fund balance. That's kind of our true disaster fund, and we also have the $1.2 million we set aside and reserve for contingency. We've got about $700,000 left there. Unfortunately, we've had a couple of big revenue refunds we've had to do for two businesses.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilwoman Wright?
Donna, do you have any concern that we'll be able to meet our necessary bond payments?
No, I don't. We have a $10 million bond payment that's due June 1st, but we know it's coming, so of course, we invest revenues all along at our big pay dates for real estate, personal property, those type of things. So that money is invested, and we plan for that, so we'll be able to make our bond payments.
Councilmember Para?
How about any sort of cash flow issues? I've worked with a lot of small municipalities, and cash flow is a very real thing for them. Working with the city for the past 12 years, I have not seen cash flow be an issue for us. Is this, could this create any sort of cash flow or cash management issue?
I actually have Lillian Lawrence, who is, she's been with the city about, I think it's over 40 years, 43 years, something like that, and she manages our cash. The woman's brilliant and does a phenomenal job. And she is working, even as we speak, with the Assistant Director of Finance, who also works with those investments, and they are assuring me and doing more work to really ensure me that with this loss of revenue, that we're still going to be okay. We're even looking at what we can do to help citizens with our personal property tax deadline that's coming up. Our due date's June 5th, so we're looking at that and making sure what we can do and still have the resources we need to move the city forward.
Thank you.
But they're some of the best.
Okay. Any further questions? Councilmember Wilder?
Just a last question. When it comes to the market, and it's been so volatile lately, does that affect us any way, our bonds or anything of that nature, or our investments?
No, because state code, we have, we can only invest in very safe securities, so nothing's in, you know, stocks or anything like that. So we're very conservative in our investments by state code.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Witt? Yes, so, Councilmember Helgason?
And you're going to get those slides to us, I guess. And now, that is like one-time cash, it looks like, because we have...
Yeah, these, for the most part, is only one-time funds.
You know, with that, showing, so what did you show by the end of the year again? Two point, or 3.2 million?
About 3.4 million.
3.4 million less than projected to finish this year. Obviously, this budget year is predicated on last year and how we finished, and a lot of things are kind of a little bit juiced and whatnot. Seeing this, I mean, you're increasing it based on, you know, whatever, inflation or some kind of numbers a lot of times. It's not a zero-based budget each year that you're saying, what are we, we're not starting from scratch, you're just, you're adding some things. So seeing that it's a fairly large number, I mean, it's a much larger number than we normally get as far as the gap, you know, what is asked for versus what is there, this is now showing actual less revenue that we're going to end with, which means we're going to have less for pay-as-you-go capital, and we're going to be starting next year, this budget document, in a whole different animal.
Well, our pay-as-you-go for 2021 is based on the end of '19.
Okay.
So, and we kind of flow it through this year and come up with a calculation, but yes.
Yeah, for next year's budget, right? Are you using some of this in here to, you know, some of our reserve for contingency is based on what we end with this year, and so...
Well, but what 2021 is fully funds, the $1.2 million, we did not depend on any leftover from '20 to carry forward to 2021. It's actually said at $1.2 million.
So there's a little bit extra there then. So if you said 700, so it's really, if we end with 700,000 versus zero, okay, gotcha, you already put it up there. So with that, as we go through this budget, it looks like there's lots of different things other than where council kind of tweaks. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we kind of tweak and add this and subtract this and maybe move in this little different direction. This budget really seems like, you know, for example, if this would have happened in February, I think you and Bonnie and the rest of staff would have presented a whole different budget document to council, a professional recommendation that says, here's what we need to do. Are there plans to, before we kind of keep on going through this, are we gonna, is there going to be a big reset, or are we gonna...
So our strategy right now is to continue to walk through the budget as we normally would, and we are going to spend some time over the next few weeks refreshing, if you will, our revenues and our expenditures.
You know, so with that, I mean, I recognize lots of the detail is in here that we, as council, we kind of look at the big pictures, and it, to me, I think would be a lot more helpful and a lot better use of everybody's time, especially when there's a new big gap in there, to come back and say, hey, here's what we got to do different. You know, we can all sit here and say, well, we think we need to add another librarian, or we need to do this, or we need to do those kind of things that we normally tweak around the edges, but when you're really looking at a major difference, I mean, you're looking at millions of dollars less than what we started. You know, we can continue walking through this, but I think our time would be better utilized in a different facet.
Well, my potential sources of revenue, well, my potential sources to replace my lost revenue is all based on 2020 sources. So 2021 really stands alone right now, and the funding sources that are in there are standing right now. Now, in the next month or so, as we see if this virus, how, what happens, it continued to, you know, is all this social distancing, if all this is working and this ends, as, you know, I listened to the president's speech last night, and he's thinking we're getting towards the end of this. So if we're really there, then what they're projecting is the economy will come back very quickly. So we just need to see if that's going to be in fiscal year 2020, or if it goes a little longer into the summer, that would impact 2021. But I need, I need about another month to go by to really see what's going to impact 2021. But at this point, those revenue sources, they stand as they are.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to follow up on Councilmember Helgason's question because I think, I appreciate your conservative projections for 2020, but the dynamics that we have experienced and will experience for the balance of 2020 led to all of the disruption that produced a $3.4 million gap, and those dynamics are not going to go away at the end of June. Those dynamics, for all reasonable purposes, can be expected to continue into 2021. And in order to deal with what money we may be spending in 2021, we really, I think, need to assume that the negative dynamics will continue much further than this summer in order to be realistic, and that's going to impact some of the aspirational things we wanted to do for employees and projects and fire departments and so forth. And as Jeff pointed out, we're kind of blind if we assume that any of what we had a month ago is going to be able to be sustained. And the sooner we do that, and also, Madam Manager, look to departments and ask what they can cut, because we don't want to lay people off, but we need to be realistic.
Absolutely. One of the things that would be helpful, and obviously, staff is going to do whatever the majority of council would like us to do, but to continue to walk through the budget, and we are almost through the general fund and do not have a whole lot before we get to the CIP, to hear and be informed by your reaction to what is in here can help inform our decisions as we come back with a revised 2021 scenario for you.
And the first thing I would say is, I think we need to cut the raises that we gave to City Council. If nothing else, just as a token, to let everyone know everybody's in the same boat.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Witt. And I would, at the suggestion of what the City Manager just said, like to continue to hear the remainder of our department heads discuss. So what is the will of council? Are there others who would like to continue to hear what our department heads have to say? We know we are in a different unprecedented time, we know that, but it does not mean we cannot continue to make use of this time today and continue to hear from our department heads who have been waiting to present for several weeks. Councilmember Para?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it would be helpful just to go through the budget, understand the basis, because what we're, we're not talking about a whole new budget, I don't believe, I'd be, it's a shock. what we're, we're not talking about a whole new budget, I don't believe, I'd be shocked. We're talking about budget adjustments. And if we go through the budget, we'll know and understand better what those adjustments are and how they impact the overall budget. What I would like to see from staff in the next couple of weeks, once they get it worked out, is a projected staff adjustment for revenue so that we can understand, and then put that basically on the list. As we've done in the past with staff adjustments, they're assumed to be included in the budget, and that would basically redefine the, the lines in which we are able to make some changes.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to continue on with the budget.
I continue on with the discussions. Normally, the, the staff will bring back revisions and, and different projections, so this is such a moving target, is if we can at least go through the budget and then get an update of what we've seen in a couple of months, it would really help us with the final process of our budget as well. The numbers today have been very helpful, and the suggestions of where those funds can come from, take care of the current shortfalls, so I think that is very helpful in the consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Ms. Vercheck.
Thank you. Then, moving forward in the general fund, let me introduce to you Jenny Jones, Director of Parks and Recreation, and she will be starting on page 208, I believe.
Hi, hi there. Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dola, members of council. As Bonnie stated, the Parks and Recreation Department's section in the budget begins on page 207, and the number's on page 208. The manager's proposed budget of $4.1 million reflects an increase of $303,000 over the fiscal year 2020 adopted budget. This increase is due to several major factors, such as the increase from the Corn Fairy Compensation Study and the 2% general merit increase. And now I'm going to cover some of the new requests. We have in this proposed budget $46,548 for two new part-time positions that will allow the department to keep College Hill Neighborhood Center open for after-school hours only. The College Hill Neighborhood Center would provide an anchor, provide an anchor facility in a more transient neighborhood, creating the potential for building stronger neighborhoods, and provide a safe place for the neighborhood children to play, eat, and complete and receive homework assistance. We have $6,000, which is proposed, for wage increases for seasonal staff at Miller Park Pool. This will allow us to be competitive with the other local pools. At this time, the Lynchburg Parks and Recreation Aquatic Staff have some of the lowest-paid lifeguard rates in the area. Lifeguards and other pool staff were not included in the Corn Fairy Study. And then under other charges, we have an increase of $51,383, the biggest portion of which is $50,000 for purchasing new furniture and equipment for the Fairview and Yoder Centers following their CDBG renovations this summer. In the past, those, in the past, historically, those, those purchases aren't covered by CDBG and have been covered by our managed vacancy. And then we also have a couple other, under other, a couple other increases, $1,000 for chemicals at the pool. We have operating supplies and public access at College Hill Neighborhood Center. And then finally, we have two smaller additions, one for $3,900 in equipment rentals, and that's for our portable toilets throughout the parks and the trail system, and $4,600 for our RecPro software. That was once, that was covered in the IT budget, but that now has moved into the Parks and Recreation Department budget. So those are the new requests, the requests that were recommended by the city manager. I'm going to just talk very briefly about requests that we had that were not recommended. We have a $7,000 request to support the Virginia Commonwealth Games, and these expensive, expenses have historically been covered by managed vacancy savings, but we request those to be in this operating budget. It's $5,500 for our staff and $1,500 for supplies, and, and that's for the different games that take place in our facilities. And then finally, we have $20,000 in funds that were requested to continue to offer internal special events like Movies in the Park, the Egg Roll Point of Honor, and the Celebration of Holiday Lights. These events and a few others were organized by Parks and Recreation and have been canceled this year due to lack of funds. This is particularly troubling considering City Council's priority number two of the Lynchburg Plan to build exceptional neighborhoods and strong families. With so few programs and events that encourage family togetherness, it seems counterproductive to not fund and implement the current and successfully and publicly supported family programs. I have one more thing I'm going to bring up, and that is, I just wanted to bring to council's attention the city-sponsored Special Event Fund, and just let you know that it was three years ago at $80,000, and it's gone down to $30,000, and that's over three years. This past year, we had $96,000 in requests from event, external event organizers, and our budget was only $30,000. So just making you aware of that decrease over those three years. I have other things I could talk about, but given the, the previous presentation, I'll hold off. May I take any questions that you might have?
Councilmember Helgason, thank you, Ms. Jones.
Question, so the market, I mean, I've heard some, from some people, you know, when the market isn't open like it used to be, and some of the vendors have, have been selling for a long time, and now they dropped 80% of their income overnight, what happens when the market is closed? Are most of these like hourly positions that aren't being, or are they fully staffed and funded, so they get paid whether the market's open or not, or...
Well, for right now, they're still, we're still open, but we're just doing the pickup service, and is for the farmers, it's call ahead, and the actual Heritage Crafters Gallery, and anything that's not related to food is closed inside of the market. And we still are fully staffed. We're still fully staffed, we're still running, keeping things clean, because we've got people coming in and making meals and that sort of thing, the restrooms, they're still using the restrooms. So we are still fully staffed. That's our plan right now, because we're considered M1, which is essential, because we are one of those, we are providing food service. And for the people downtown, and for those people who are using SNAP, they're still getting their food there.
It seems like, just from, you know, anecdotally, that I've heard that lots of the people that were there selling have really, I mean, they've been hit hard. And so, you know, with that, it's, when they're getting hit hard and we're, you know, I mean, there, there kind of needs to be some, somewhat of a balance, I think. I don't know if there's been any reductions or whatnot, but lots of...
Their, their rent has been prorated. If they were one of the businesses that was not groceries or providing meals, their rent has now been prorated, and they're aware of this. One other thing I'll say is, there's been a lot of questions about why the farmer's market wasn't open. This is not a city decision. The farmer's markets are governed by the department, State Department of Agriculture. So they handed down a ruling that farmer's markets were considered restaurants, and there was no way for us to monitor only 10 people into the farmer's market. And now they've handed out a new decision, as of two days ago, one day ago, that is that we can only have pre-orders, call-ahead orders that people can drive by and pick up. So that's, so that was not a city decision, because they are the authority over farmer's markets, of which we are one. Okay?
And Councilmember Para?
I guess just, just one last thing, is some of these increases, which I realize you, you kind of went over them, but those obviously need to be on the list, any of these increases, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Para?
I was going to put a little finer point on that. We put the two new part-time positions on the list, and the increase in other charges fund, I guess, less the, the Miller Park Pool chemicals. We kind of need pool chemicals, but, so that's, that's a good chunk. Did you, you have a question? All right. So I'm looking at the $52,548, which is two new part-time positions and a pay increase, and also the $53,983 increase in other charges, less the pool, the chemical cost.
So you want us to put the furniture and kitchen equipment on the list?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Wilder?
As far as on list to consider, to look at, or get more information on, or...
Just, just on the list, so that when, when we go to balancing the budget, it'll be something that we debate.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, you said the furniture, the...
Basically, the $593.9 number and the $52.5 number.
Okay.
I basically said any of the...
Okay. Because, and, and I understand both of what you're saying. I'm, I'm looking like internet service is, is in these numbers for College Hill Center. And so, because none of us really know where we're going to land, we do know that businesses have closed, people's jobs have been affected, I'm thinking that at some point, we are going to have to help our local workforce services provide some employment assistance services somewhere. And so I just don't want our cuts to be so, even on the list, to say that internet service at a center, because some people are going to have to use the centers for something more than inner recreation or after-school. Go ahead. I just want clarification of that.
So that's, that's the concept of the list. You add things to the list, and then once they come back, once we have a finer point of what actually the economic things are, then you actually debate it, yes, we do need to do this, no, we don't need to do it. That's the concept. We don't typically debate it now, and that's why I suggested that if there are going to be lots of things, if there are, there's going to be lots of shortcomings, it's best if we don't just, you know, throw out political theory, but we have actual professional guidance that says, hey, we actually need to have these, the internet provider system, or we actually need to have to pay these lifeguards, and we're going to have to close the pool. Those kind of things are kind of nice for us to hit and to see in advance, rather than, you know, each, each little point. That, that was my, my, my big picture point, and so...
I understand that, and I've been on council since 2014, so I know what we put on the list, and I believe I did not say it was political theory. I think cutting everything and not listening to department heads could have been seen as political theory. But what I'm asking, Ms. Jones, is College Hill was a center for potential employment services and that sort of thing. So I'm just trying to clarify the services and the ask of what is right here.
Okay. Right now, some, some workforce services are being provided, but that center is closed right now. We have our youth futures coordinator working out of there somewhat, and we also have several programs for seniors, and there's a toddler exercise program happening in College Hill, but we don't have the staff to open the after-school program. This particular, these particular funds were to actually open back up that after-school program. And I will mention, I granted this is temporary, but it's, I think it's information that council should know, that we are working with Lynchburg City Schools now to provide meals, that their transportation, their, that method that they had set up of transporting that many, 2,500 to 3,000 lunches and meals per day was not sustainable. So they will now be using the neighborhood centers as distribution points. So they'll be delivering the meals to the neighborhood centers at 10:00 a.m., and then we'll be doing the, the, just the brief passing out of the, it's not, we're not doing any congregation, just to pick up, just to pick up. And the other pieces, and for some of those areas that aren't covered by our central city neighborhoods, we're also helping them deliver to those other neighborhood throughout the city that are not covered by a neighborhood center. So we, for the centers, it's important, and, you know, College Hill, we could probably staff to, that could also be distribution center with current staff, because quite frankly, we are at full capacity. This is the first time in 12 years our department is functioning at full personnel capacity. I'm just letting you know that. Okay?
That doesn't affect the budget that we're talking about now. That's the current budget, but not the future.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you for that.
But there's been a question about turnover in the past, so I'm just saying, we, that's right now not an issue for our department.
Councilwoman, follow up on what she made, and then if you're, that's the first I've heard about neighborhood centers being used as food distribution for schools. That's a plan in progress, you're not announcing anything, correct?
It's a plan in progress.
All right, that's a plan. Okay, I just wanted to be clear that that's, that wasn't an official statement.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Follow up on that. I understand the delivery from the recreational centers will be in lieu of some bus routes that the schools currently are engaging in, is, is that right? So will the, the school food deliveries are based on a school budget? Is the school going to be complementing the Parks and Rec budget for their activities that are coming out of the community centers, as you planned it?
We've not worked through that yet.
Okay, that's too much in the weeds. I think it's a great idea to collaborate use of our facilities with supplemental efforts with the schools. That's, that's what we need.
Just to kind of put the umbrella on this, our department is in charge of ESF-11, which covers agriculture and food. So that's part of what we organize for the city.
So ESF means Emergency Service Function?
Emergency Support Lunch.
Emergency Support Function as a part of our emergency operations plan. Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
I attend the, especially Yoder Center community meetings monthly, and they have a strong support from our community, from St. John's and so many other organizations that work with them. So I, I applaud you for the work they're doing there, really making a difference, and the neighbors are really engaged in those, in that community especially. We like to see several others also be as engaged. There are no College Hill, Daniels Hill, they're, they're strong communities. So the, the community centers there are some of the fabrics of our community, Daniels Hill, they are some of the fabrics of our community. So I commend you for the work that you're doing there, and the staff members that are doing there to meet the needs of persons in the, in the city community. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. No further questions. Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right. Mr. White?
Next, we have Kent White, Director of Community Development.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Madam Black, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased to provide the overview of community development's budget, beginning on page 215 of your budget document. So our department's budget, in addition to what you've heard as far as organizational increases for salary and benefits, has two line item increases. One is for $7,000 for the monitoring service that was discussed during council's adoption of the short-term rental ordinance. The cost of the monitoring service would be offset in the coming year by the fee hosts pay to register their short-term rental units. Our budget also includes approximately $90,000 for salary benefits and equipment to hire an environmental compliance inspector position. $23,000 of that total includes a one-time capital cost for the purchase of a vehicle. As you all know, public and private development sites must be inspected for compliance with the city's erosion control and stormwater ordinances at least once every two weeks and within 48 hours following a rain event with a quarter inch of, of precipitation. Changes to state code in 2014 have increased both erosion control and stormwater review and inspection requirements. As a result, just to put it simply, plans take, now take longer to review, sites take longer to inspect. In addition, our trend data over the last five years indicates an increase in the number of land disturbance permits, the number of large footprint development sites, and the length of inspection times. Although our department has attempted to offset some of this workload through cross-training and community awareness, you've heard about some of those efforts over time, staff struggles to meet the requirements of the city's municipal separate storm sewer permit, also known as MS4, you hear that term of, of art thrown around. But in short, failure to meet that permit requirement could have legal consequences for the city. Notwithstanding the obligations of the city's permit and ordinance requirements, the addition of inspector carries with the added benefit of helping protect downstream property. As you know, you have a lot of rezoning petitions that come before you, people want to know about environmental protections and stormwater. Our ability to get to those sites frequently affects the, the ability for us to monitor that development and ensure it meets it. It also improves the developmental approval process. As of now, we have to have our environmental reviewer come in and often assist with inspections just to help offset that, which of course slows down our plan review process. And we want to make sure, as you've stated to us, that we're ensuring consistency with, between public and private development projects. The total costs associated with the position, the vehicle and the equipment would be completely offset by charges to our, to, from our department to the city's stormwater fund, and because of the offsetting... And because of the offsetting revenue associated with both expenses, neither the cost of the monitoring service nor the environmental inspector position are expected to impact the general fund budget. As such, you'll note on page 216, there's no increase to total city costs outside of those associated with the salary supplements and benefits. I'll briefly, obviously, we've just talked about the current budget situation.
Actually, it looks like you're, if you take out that salary adjustment, it looks like you're actually $60,000 below last year's cost.
Absolutely.
But granted, you do have a $600,000 transfer from stormwater, which helps significantly, and that is the offsetting, that offsets the car and the person as well as other expenses.
Yes, sir.
Stormwater later. Okay. You said that permits and stormwater ENS permits, by the way, thank you for your staff assisting in the matter that I contacted you about.
I couldn't get to it, Senator.
Oh, no, it's Johnny on the spot. You're saying that it's increasing number of inspections in sites. However, if I look at the permit data, that it looks like the number of permits, building permits issued has been flat or declining over the past few years. So help me reconcile more ENS permits but less building permits.
Great. Now, that's a great observation. So we've talked about this a little bit in our performance measures, that the number of permits, what we're seeing is the size of these jobs are changing. So we're seeing, we issue one permit for an apartment complex, but on a given day, we might do 52 inspections. As a matter of fact, that's what we did on Monday, 52 electrical service inspections for that. We're trying to reconcile that, and because I know it's difficult to follow, so to give council some comparison data, we've added to our performance measures metrics like final building permits, final inspections, so that you can see how those things are equalizing over time. So it's showing you less overall inspections, but our number of permits are remaining constant. So it's the size of these jobs that's the real difference. And we can, we're certainly happy to share that trend data with you if that would help.
Okay. All right. Which is interesting, just, I know this isn't truly budget, but one of the complaints that, or not complaints, one of the flags I got from a leading businessperson in the area was talking about the trend of building permits in Lynchburg compared to the surrounding regions, and that our building permit trend was going down, which I haven't gotten the surrounding region area yet, which is why I asked the manager what our building permit trend was. So yes, you're saying larger projects, less number of permits, more individual inspections per project.
Yes, sir.
Because if you're doing an apartment building, yes, that's one building permit, but you have, oh, I don't know, 50 different electrical inspections per, you know, one for each unit in that apartment. But what that doesn't mean is, what that tells me, reading between the lines, is we're not doing a lot of single-family houses. The single-family housing development is somewhere else, and probably in the counties. The entity that was asking me about this was a material supplier, and that's how they track where they make investments, where are the building permits, because that's a tangible item for them to track. Now, I guess they probably look at total dollar volume also, but it's just an interesting juxtaposition. Thank you for the, allow me to digress.
Councilmember Hickelson?
So on the list, and I can appreciate that the money is coming from the transfer, but that's still the transfer from the stormwater fee. It's still coming from our citizens that have to pay the extra fees to the stormwater. So just because it doesn't come from the general fund doesn't mean that it's not an expense. So adding that extra person should be on the list in addition to the increased costs associated with adding that extra person. One thing I think we should probably still have on the list is the 8,300 for the Airbnb or the short-term rentals, the cost of monitoring. I see that you have it on there.
One thing you think needs to be on the list?
I think it needs to be on the list because of the fact that we haven't got anything. I mean, so we're looking at 8,300 expense in contractual services, if I'm reading this correct. That's normally would have been covered by the increase in Airbnb fees. Those Airbnb fees haven't, hasn't happened, and so because of the fact that we haven't had an agreement. And secondly, even if there were, they're pretty well vacant. So that should probably, this extra $8,300 in monitoring, the implementation should be on the list. That's 8,300 increased expense. Am I reading that right?
If I can just clarify one point. So I think what you're referring to is the voluntary collection agreement for taxes. That's the Airbnb piece. The, but the.
But part of it was, part of it was going to be paid for, I thought, by those extra fees.
Sorry, I'm, no, sir. The council, when you establish the registration fee, those were the costs that were to offset the monitoring, and you have implemented that $150 registration fee.
Yeah, but I don't think, we haven't signed anything, so nobody's paid that fee.
No, sir, I'm sorry. It's two different things. You set the fee by ordinance. All short-term rental hosts are required to register by July, so you've set that registration fee. In addition, staff is working diligently to try to get a voluntary collection agreement to ease the ability of hosts to address taxes, but it's two separate expenses.
Yeah, because that's still up in the air, I think it should be on the list, and then we can talk about it later. But I don't believe we've had, we haven't had any implementation on that, so.
Yeah, so that's supposed to start in July, so we're not having.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we don't have an agreement for people to then say, hey, you voluntarily signed and you voluntarily pay your permit.
And so again, to Mr. White's point, it's two different.
It's two different issues. The agreement is with Airbnb that we don't have yet.
Totally, yeah.
But the actual Airbnb host internally is the July start date of the paying the registration fee. So that's two different topics.
Yes, ma'am. And that, you established that by code and october.
Correct.
I think it's still the same. Do you want the 8,300 on the list or not?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just because it's, I mean, there are things that we put on there. Well, we originally had the 8,300 on there for July. I think it was actually last year, which hadn't been collected, I think according to the agreement. Didn't happen because we met and it kind of kept going on, and so then now for some reason it's next July and, you know, so anyway.
All right. Any further questions or thoughts, Mr. White?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Did you have something else that you were going to tell us?
You know, I was just going to tell you that Ms. Witt alluded earlier to the fact that we've been in a, we've seen a really vibrant construction economy right now, and we're fortunate that continues. I'd like to point out that the, in talking to our building official this morning, that COVID-19 is not the thing that is slowing our construction right now. It's weather, which we are, we're fortunate, which obviously speaks to this position, but also the fact that we're getting calls about, you know, are we still open? Are we still doing, accepting permits? And are we still doing inspections? And just take the opportunity while we're on camera to say, we are absolutely open for business. We have lots of means to do that, and we want to make sure that anyone who's willing, who's got, who's moving their development forward, we're ready and systemed to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to follow up on that. There are three of us on council who were on council 10 years ago when we saw our last economic decline, trauma. And at that time, it was the construction industry that was traumatized. The restaurants were doing well, other aspects and facets of our economy was thriving, but construction crews were being laid off, construction businesses had no jobs, and it was based on finances and banks and the financial industry. And it was so somewhat of a sterile financial meltdown, completely the opposite now, as you pointed out.
Thank you.
Marjette Upsher, Director of Economic Development and Tourism.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of council. As the Director of the Office of Economic Development and Tourism, thank you for the opportunity to present the FY 2021 budget for my department. The Office of Economic Development and Tourism works to position the city of Lynchburg as the best small city in America, even in these unprecedented times, implementing progressive initiatives and incentives to promote Lynchburg's business community and drive investment in the city. We are incredibly grateful for council's continued support of our work to grow this city organically. Our budget begins on 2/25. The organizational chart remains unchanged for FY 2021. The highlights of this budget are listed on page 228 and include the increase in salaries and employee benefits that were outlined by the city manager in her budget message, a financial management policy request to move the $250,000 that's normally budgeted in the capital improvement program as general development support to our operating budget. Per the finance staff, these funds, which provide support for the implementation of business retention and expansion, workforce and talent development, and entrepreneurship projects are better suited in the operating budget. And I am sure that our finance director, Ms. Witt, can speak to why this request was made. There are no changes associated with this money. In FY 2017, $200,000 was moved from the tourism budget to a reserve account as part of the city's contribution to the Academy Center of the Arts. The final contribution to the academy was made in FY 2020. Our budget in FY 2021 was decreased by $200,000, as noted. We requested a reallocation of these funds to continue support for one-time expenses to build tourism assets and capacity to drive tourism promotion, visitation, and revenue. The reallocated funds will align with the recommendations in the Blueprint for Opportunity, the city's Downtown 2040 Master Plan, and the 2019 Sports Tourism Strategic Plan. The manager's, excuse me, proposed budget includes the following change from our request. A $53,000 increase in sponsorship for increased support for the growth of sports tourism and related events in the city of Lynchburg as recommended by the recently completed Sports Tourism Strategic Plan. And I know that this sector of our economy has been really hit hard with what is going on. I would just say that I believe that the city of Lynchburg will come out of this stronger, and we will be prepared to hit the ground running. Part of that is, we have already recently, in partnership with Liberty University, placed bid fees and hospitality for new sporting events, 12 Liberty NCAA tournaments through 25, I mean, through 2026. So we are already bidding on sports business with Liberty all the way to 2026. We have also, with the hotels that we have now, and those that have been brought online, we have become a much more attractive place for conferences. I know all this is really hard to imagine now, but I think it's important that we think beyond this incident that's occurring right now, and know that we, even as we speak, we have conferences that have not canceled, they are postponing. And our hashtag on our tourism website is "We Will See You Later." And we are very hopeful that we are encouraging people not to cancel their events, but just to postpone them. We're also looking at an anchor venue inventory and a needs assessment, because what we wanted to do with the Sports Tourism Plan is, obviously, we want to really, really leverage the unbelievable assets that Liberty University has. They are a huge draw. But if we can also help elevate our other assets, which are the other colleges and universities, and our own Parks and Rec, and things like the Central Virginia Soccer Complex out there, if we can do things to elevate that. There's also a $22,000 increase in miscellaneous contractual services, and this would be for things that are one-time design and planning services, like city gateway signage, neighborhood wayfaring and banner systems. And also, we wanted to put together a development imprinting of a sports-specific facilities and visitor guide. So the, if you look at all of that in the budget, if you look at that normally general development support is in CIP, and then our regular budget, we actually have a net decrease from last year's total budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Upsher.
Any questions for economic development? Councilmember Nelson?
Just a curious question. In view of the governor's directive earlier and the impact on our hotels and motels, are Airbnbs considered impacted by the directive to cease business, or how do they fit in?
You know, I really, I don't know how they fit in, but I do, I had a conversation earlier today where it was suggested that, you know, they may be filling in with those folks that are not staying, you know, a hotel has got limited service or is, you know, not taking reservations. I think it's kind of a while.
I have feelings about that.
Exactly.
In a sense, they generate the revenue that others cannot, but in another sense, they bring visitors from distant places into neighborhoods that we may not want at this time to be there. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Perrow?
So there used to be 350,000 dollars in the CIP.
No, it was 250.
The third bullet says 350.
But that's a combination of the 250 from general development support as well as the $200,000 that was in there, and then taken back out, and then the $75,000 that was suggested to be put back in by the city manager. Have I got that right, Donna?
It was 250. It used to be in CIP.
Okay, so if that, that 250 was pulled out of this operating budget and moved back to the CIP, you'd show a $50,000 decrease roughly in your operating cost, so that's...
No.
So, all right, let me ask this differently. How do I get to not spending as much money this year as opposed to last year? Because it looks 200,000, it looks like it's $200,000 more in FY 2021.
$50,000 less.
Which is what I just said.
What you have taken out, the $200,000 for the Academy, the Academy Center for the Arts was in that budget in, previously.
That's correct. The $250,000 used to be budgeted in CIP. But what we did was, every year, we sent, we transferred that money to the EDA because they can, they use that money. So there really was not a reason for it to be in CIP. So actually, Marjette submitted it there, and I moved it, because it really needs to be in the operating budget. But I think you're referring to the 200,000 that was going to the academy to meet the city's commitment to the academy, and that is back in Marjette's budget.
I see the reduction of the line item there for the 200,000. But if I look at the total city cost.
No, but she requested it.
If I look at the total city cost, it's $200,000 more than the previous year, right? But that incorporates the 250 that was transferred, so they really would be net, without that 250, if that 250 wasn't transferred, it would be an actual $50,000 decrease in operating.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thought I was going crazy for a minute.
No, you weren't. I'm sorry.
Okay. Where are we going to put on the list? You know, one thing about the list, it's a useful tool to remove, and then you can look at the merits of what needs to be put back. I'd much rather have more come off and then sit back and go to the list and be able to add items back in than have to comb through the budget and look for what we have to pull back out. So what is it? The $50,000 in contractual services and the rentals, and the $50,000 in rentals and leases? Should, I mean, are those items you can't do without?
No.
So we should probably put those two items on the list. I'm debating how much of the 200, the $350,000 should go on the list. There's your 250 now, I see it. While we put the entire 350,000 on the list, we can, we can look at pieces of that that to put back. I think that we've got to be very careful with economic development, because it is, it's a way we invest going forward, but I think... it's a way we invest going forward, but I think we need to, I don't know what this, what this revenue impact's going to be for next year. So I'd love to put it back. It'd be, it'd be high on my list to put it back, but I think we need to prepare.
Councilmember Hackelsohn.
Also on there, the 250,000 for the Economic Development Authority. So that is, that is, describe that for me. As I'm seeing on the budget on page 228, it says it also includes 250,000 for the Economic Development Authority. So lots of times, people say it wasn't the city, it was the Economic Development Authority. So if the city is transferring 250,000 to economic development, which then transfers 250,000 to the Economic Development Authority, is that, is my reading that correct?
Right. That money's kept separate, and so that money is called, it's general development support, and it's kept separate from the EDA's strategic initiatives, and that money is used. And I have a report, which I can provide for each one of you on where that money goes, but-
So my question of that is, of this, like, 250,000 that goes there, that does other projects?
Yes.
Okay. Like, for example-
There's a local redevelopment grant that the majority of that money, about 70% of it goes to, and that goes out to, like I just sent out probably 54 letters to people that had done projects within the city and gotten a finalized permit, and that money goes for a certain amount of that to incentivize investment in the city. And so-
So that would probably be good to see, you know, and I look back and I'm remembering, you know, the grocery store downtown that was funded, and then, you know, granted, it may have come from this, may not have.
No, it did not come from this.
But it may have been supplanted because from, you know, I realize money's fungible, so it'd be nice to see what, what kind of things are there.
Absolutely. I have a full report on that, and I'll be happy to get that to all of you.
Good, thank you. So having that on the list, and we'll get the report, and that'll be able to help look at it. You didn't put that on the list, did you?
Yeah, it's on there.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, gotcha. So it's already on there, so that'd be-
Uh huh. Yeah, to be clear, it's not, I don't want to make any of these cuts, I just think we need to be prepared.
And can we just get a clarification? It's 250 out of the general development support, and then what's left in the budget right now is $75,000, not 350. It's 250 and 75. Is that the whole thing? Right?
It's, it's the bullet point, 350,000, however you break it up, and then, and then we'll-
Got it.
We'll parse it out and hopefully restore it in full.
I have a question, just to follow up to that. Are any of the, because we already committed in bids, is anything relating to those 12 possible events or bids tied into this funding for the city?
I would need to, yes, thank you. I would need to check with Lisa Meriwether and make sure that we haven't-
Contracted or obligated.
Already committed to that, right.
Okay. Councilmember Wright.
I'm excited to have this out on the list, and I'm wondering if, in addition to the report about the, the work that the EDA has done or where the money has gone, if you'd also be able to provide a report that outlines the economic impact of your team's work, so we can, so we can, because my, my understanding is that the impact from the Office of Economic Development is far outsized to the investment we make in the office. So if that's, if it's possible to pull that number, I'm thinking about the Flowers Bakery, for example, and their investment of $25 million in this community, in large part thanks to the work of the Economic Development Team. So I would like to see that information, if that's possible.
Yes, it is.
Councilmember Wright, what time period would you like to see that for?
Gosh, I don't know what's feasible.
Can you do two years? Oh, sure. Two years. So I'm doing the museum, too. I know you want me to get up. Ted Delaney is here, but museums come under my office as well, which I'm so happy. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor again, Vice Mayor and members of council. As Director of Museums, I appreciate the opportunity to present the FY 2021 budget for this department. I'd like to recognize Ted Delaney, the city's Chief Public History Officer, who leads this department and who is here to answer any questions that I can. And we are incredibly grateful for council's continued support of the work of the museum to collect, interpret, preserve, and share the history and material culture of the city of Lynchburg and the surrounding areas. The budget begins on 2/33. The organizational chart remains unchanged, and the highlights of this budget really are, it's a flat budget, are just the increase in employee, in salaries and employee benefits outlined by the city manager. And Ted and I are happy to answer any questions.
That actually looks really straightforward.
Good. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Ted. Wherever he is. I thought I saw him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to applaud Mr. Delaney and the City Museum for the variety of exhibits and presentations that the museum offers to students, citizens, tourists. That's outstanding, and we're fortunate to have that facility and your programming.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder.
I'd like to echo that as well. I get an opportunity to go to several events in our community, from the Day at the Point to the exhibit on the voters' information that Ms. Pedacolus did, as well as the Green Book presentation. And I just don't remember having so many presentations of that nature at our museums. And I have been so impressed and so enlightened and so educated about so much of our history in our community that goes on, that happened in Lynchburg and also exhibited at the museum. So I'm so appreciative to you and the staff, and Mr. Delaney and all the staff you're doing, to make it even better, to educate our community. And myself, being from here, so many things I did not know. So I appreciate that, especially, I really enjoyed the Day at the Point. That is such a wonderful festive event that we have here in our community, and it's really a jewel. So I'm so thankful for the work that you're doing in our community.
Thank you. If I could just take a second, I would say that for those of you that are trying to practice social distancing, if you go to the museum website or you go to our tourism website, you will see all kinds of virtual exhibits and different things that you can do while you are homebound. I will also say, on the economic development side, immediately upon the, the orders of social distancing, we sent out a survey to the business community, which we got a, what we think out of 900 emails, a pretty good response rate of about 14%. And what the business community, and this was all different, this was all the tourism stakeholders, as well as all the businesses, what they told us they wanted was communication. So we have created a COVID-19 Regional Business Support Task Force. We are meeting, we've already met twice, we're meeting on Mondays and Thursdays virtually. It is the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, the Downtown Lynchburg Association, our workforce partners, the SBDC. We are all meeting so that we can give a concise message out to the business community. The Office of Economic Development is sending out a newsletter every Tuesday with updates on it as well. So I just, I want to make sure that the public knows that they can get in touch with our office and that communicate, I know all of council supports communication to the business community.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember Perro.
Thank you. Just, just thinking about that, and having the museums gives us an excellent opportunity for educational outreach, and if we've got time, it'd be nice if, maybe you guys are already doing it, but figure out a way to partner with the school system in order to provide some, oh, I don't know, educational segments that could be, the teachers could direct their students to.
That's amazing.
Just to, just to help them out a little bit. And maybe at a later meeting, I'd be interested to hear about what assistance council could provide to the Office of Economic Development in the, in the near term, if, to help our local businesses. Thank you for getting the word out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Malowitz with Parking Management.
Thank you for being here. Before I start, I just do want to thank all you for your dedication, perseverance, and hard work during all these trying times that we're in. It's been very much appreciated at our level to know that we have councils such as you standing up and being a focal and point for our community. I also want to thank Bonnie and Reed and the rest of the leadership team that have also been critical in making sure that we can continue to deliver our services to everybody. So with that said, I'll jump into a favorite topic of everyone, parking management. We'll begin our discussion this afternoon, evening, on page 237 of the FY 2021 budget book. I want to begin with a quick overview of parking management. The department currently oversees the operation of 1,035 on-street parking spaces and just over 2,000 off-street public parking spaces within the central business district. Our primary goal with parking management is to support current and future business growth within the central business district by providing sufficient accommodations for commercial, retail, and residential uses. We accomplish this objective through the development implementation of a parking program that we focus on communications with downtown stakeholders, partnerships with our downtown organizations to promote parking opportunities, and by utilizing best parking practices to provide a simplistic parking system that is user-friendly to the public. With the help of the Lynchburg Parking Authority, the board takes into consideration recommendations for all off-street parking management initiatives, goals for better utilization of parking to encourage vehicle turnover, and to maintain consistency with ongoing parking operations, plans, and policies from the city of Lynchburg. And finally, the Parking Management Department operates in the general fund on a fee-based model. So all of our proposed expenditures that you'll hear today are supported by, are offset and supported by revenues projected through the fiscal year. So moving into the proposed budget for this upcoming FY 2021 year, the Parking Management Department is submitting a proposed budget of $560,237. This represents a 5.8% increase compared to the adopted FY 2020 budget of $529,635. With this current budget, we have no proposed changes in our positions. The biggest increase in the budget is what we've already talked about with the salaries and healthcare. So next biggest increase is our, within our contractual services, our other charges, which also include a shared position with Public Works for a maintenance position to help take care of all of our facilities, and then $8,000 increase in rentals and leases for our two parking lots that we managed contractually. In order to compensate for this increase in expenses, the Parking Management Department's projecting our revenues to be the same, at $560,237. The projection is a combination of line item revenue increases totaling $45,602 compared to the adopted FY 2020 estimates. Reflective of revenue adjustments are based off of the previous fiscal year actual revenues collected and projections from current revenues already collected in FY 2020. The largest revenue projection increases of $15,000 and includes the parking lease agreements. So we, again, are looking at those lease agreements to continue to operate at capacity or more and sell those permits for both residential and business use. Expected revenue from parking fines will remain relatively level through FY 2021 compared to actual revenue collected in '18 and '19. All of our current revenues are projected to stay relatively flat according to past fiscal year performance. And that was, that about covers what we're doing, what we're proposing for the Parking Management budget, and take any questions that you have now.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. So for fines downtown, how have we seen that change, if at all, during Main Street renewal?
We haven't seen any change in that, our fine.
That's wild, given that so many parking spaces are unavailable on Main Street.
Well, with the free two-hour parking in the midtown parking deck, a lot of folks have utilized that. So we've actually seen an uptick in the utilization of the midtown parking deck, which has been great. That's where we want them to be.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hackelsohn.
You mentioned fines, though.
Right. I was talking about fines, correct?
Yeah.
So people are parked, so the, okay. A quick question on the salaries and employee, and the benefits.
Sure.
Normally, benefits are a function and a percentage of salaries. For some reason, this, the benefits increase in costs is more than the salary increase in cost. You know, normally, when you have a 10% raise in salaries, you'll have, you know, a corresponding percentage raise, but this actually, the dollar amount shows that the benefits are going higher than the actual salary raise.
What I can estimate that's based off of is with the corn fairies study, where positions were realigned, so some of those were actually increased.
So the positions, then that would mean the salary increased, not the benefits.
It's also the increase in the health insurance cost.
Okay.
He's got very few people, so that additional, it's about $1,000 per person, that our health insurance benefits are going up, so it just happens in a small department that those benefits increases are going to be more than the salary increases.
What would seem-
There's also the VRS percentage, you know, there's several things in that benefit.
But normally, like any of the other ones, are always, it's a percentage of it, not more than it. That's what seems a little strange.
It's just because it's, it's such a small department that it just looks weird. By the time you put in the health insurance increase per person, the VRS increase, I think he's got a newer employee that gets the BLDP. So really, it's those type of increases.
But those increases are a percentage of the pay increase. So, so the dollar amount, the flat dollar amount, could only be the health insurance. I mean, VRS is a function of more money.
But, yes, but the percentage for VRS went up as well. So.
But it wouldn't, so, so in this case, you're actually paying a whole lot more for health insurance, and just in this department than other departments?
No, in every department. It's just that the salary increases for his staff, he doesn't have many staff that are at, that get higher pay, so of course, their percentage increase when they got their 3% from last year, or 2% from last year, it's just not as much as what the health insurance went up and the other costs.
Can I add a, something to that? Mr. Hackelsohn, I think is onto a little something. So if I look back at museums, I think this is just kind of a question, you see another small staff, but the employee benefits increase was miniscule compared to parking management. But it's only, you know, it's eight employees versus what?
But he's got a lot, in museums, there's a lot of employees that are part-time that don't have benefits. They don't have health insurance benefits.
So that's a, okay, or, or in Department of Communications and Public Engagement, sorry, moving ahead, that's four employees, it's still-
Relative, it's lower.
It's lower than, yeah, so, I don't know, maybe it's a calculation issue. It, it's just interesting why that number is larger than the, than the increase, and I think that's a good question.
No concerns.
Okay, thank you. With that, you know, I realize that, you know, your estimates are based on the revenue. You know, there's been lots of empty, because of, as Councilmember Wright said a minute ago, a lot of empty spots because of construction. A lot of these spaces downtown are typically utilized by the restaurants that have been sorely empty. We had done a pretty good preliminary report from Ms. Witt about declining revenues. Councilmember Perro asked about, are there others that are user fees that are going to be declining revenues? So this, you need to probably, I would imagine, I don't know how you want to put it on the list, but I think you should put it on the list by sharpening your pencil to say, hey, here are some issues, here are some things that are going to happen, we're going to probably have less revenue. And so when you have less revenue, if you're saying, here's less revenue, and we match that with the expenditures, I think you need to have your expenditures brought down because the revenue's probably going to be down a little bit, and at least in anticipation. So how you put that on the list, I think should probably be up to you, because you're, we're not saying, hey, you know, cut out fines or add fines or raise the prices of tickets or something, but how you can actually have a better estimate of what may happen in those future, next year's revenues. I got, I got a feeling there, and probably not going to be as, as Rosie, I know you said before, they're full occupancy, lots of things were happening. I mean, you saw all the, the bus, you know, the good things that were happening downtown. Randy has spoken with some of the restaurant owners, so have I. Some of those, they're, they're ready to get back to work, but, I mean, it's difficult. I mean, when, when you had your whole thing just jerked right out from under you, you don't just jump back on that horse that quickly. And so, and especially if we don't have lots of the students that come back that are renting places downtown, using the parking. So I ju, I think we need a little bit, to have a little finer-tooth comb on, finer-tooth pencil on that.
That's on my list.
That's what I'd want on the list, a way you could figure out what you can do with that.
Just present a better adjustment to revenues.
Yeah, 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 just so they're not, I mean, I realize your expenses are going equal with your, with your, your expectations of revenue, but you're anticipating your revenues increasing, you know, fairly sizably, going from 529 to 560, $30,000 increase in revenue. in revenue. I got a feeling, yeah, so that's what I would put on the list.
Okay, I can do that.
Any further questions or thoughts?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mayor, the last departmental budget in the general fund is the Department of Communications and Public Engagement, Ms. Joanne Martin.
Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, members of council, Department of Communications and Public Engagement starts on 240. First thing I guess we should mention is that the name changed from Communications and Marketing to Department of Communications and Public Engagement. Over the years, I think there's been some confusion about Communications and Marketing. We think Communications and Public Engagement probably best speaks to our mission, especially with public engagement, and so there has been a name change. The budget, getting it said on, started on page 240, our submitted budget represents a 6% increase that is due to salary adjustments resulting from Phase One implementation of the corn fairy compensation study and a 2% pay increase. What remains unfunded was $4,715 for the purchase of Resident Connect data for our emergency alert system from Everbridge, which is our, if you're familiar with Lynchburg alerts. The FCC recently changed its rules to allow us to subscribe to citizens' cellphone data. Our system currently has all the landlines, and as you know, that with everything changing and people going away from having landlines, the only way we can get cellphone data is for people to go onto the system and subscribe to it and put in their cellphone information. With Resident Connect data, when we subscribe to that for the $4,715 on a yearly basis, they will supply that information to put that into the system. Recently, talking to Representative from Everbridge, we learned that there is another system that we can use that is also subscriber-based called Community Engagement or Nixel, where people can receive text messages that is a little cheaper than this Resident Connect system, and the city manager has agreed to fund that for this year that we can use. Also, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the FCC has relaxed its rules to, with two systems that we already have, the emergency service with iPOS and WIA, which is, and I may have to call on to Melissa Foster to tell us what those things mean, but is, iPOS is the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System, WIA is the Wireless Emergency Alert System, which means that we can ping cellphone towers and get emergency alert messages to our citizens. So because FCC has relaxed its rules regarding that, then we are going to go forward with the other Community Engagement system, and so we are fine now putting the Resident Connect data on the back burner for maybe for next year, and you may see that again next year to come forward with that. So we're not asking for funding for that at this moment. The second one that was not funded is a Digital Engagement Specialist position. We are doing succession planning in my department because I have an employee with 29 years of experience, and unfortunately for my department, and great for her, is retiring at the end of this fiscal year, so that gives us an opportunity to kind of retool our positions in my department, and this position is one that is sorely needed in the department. We are, we have oversight for over 12 different software applications and cloud-based programs in my department. It is extremely difficult to keep up with that. Those are mainly software programs that we oversee for the entire organization. I'm not talking about just things for my department. These are things like Everbridge, for instance, survey software that we oversee for the organization, for all the different departments. The iChat, if you're familiar with our website, we now have online chat where a person doesn't have to call in, they can chat live. We have to make sure that that's up and running, so that's not done by IT, that's done by my department. In order to be able to do a good job for our citizens, we have to be able to stay on top of that, and it's difficult not having an individual who has, who does that on a full-time basis. So that position is one that you see, that 72, 171 includes salary and benefits. So that is Community Communications and Public Engagement budget presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Councilmember Hagelsohn.
I guess this really isn't necessarily for Communications and Marketing, or Communications and whatever the new term is, Public Engagement, excuse me. It's, I guess it's looking at, you know, this kind of is striking because of the number of people. The average salary increase in this department is 6.6%, and again, not just your department, I realize it's with the corn fairy combining with the pay increases, or the wage, or the general increase of 2%. Some of the departments are 3%, Parks and Rec is 7.8%. Some of those things, you know, that may be something to actually put on the list as far as how that could actually be implemented better. You know, there's lots of things I think we could kind of go around and look at, but in a time, is that really something that we want to be, you know, having 6% to 8% kind of pay increases on a department-wide, and so this isn't necessarily for your department, but this is, I think, more of a, that kind of thing needs to probably be on the list, the whole concept of it.
The whole concept.
The whole concept of just having across-the-board combination which equates fairly large increases. I mean, so I know it's the corn fairy study plus the extra 2%.
The 2% is the 2% from the current year that is included in here.
Yeah.
The 3% is allocated, actually, actually, in non-departmental for 2021, and we absolutely will take a look at that as we are reviewing our revenues and expenditures, as I stated earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or thoughts? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that, I guess, all of our departments are the face of the city in one way or the other, but your department truly is the face of the city. It may be the first image that anybody experiences when they are looking for Lynchburg, and thank you for what appears to be a very efficiently operated department, streamlined in so many ways, and the figures show it. It's a tribute to your leadership.
And thank you for the, actually, the name change. That's appreciated because we are more in public engagement these days, and so all of the communications, when you look across the board, that's a better reflection. So thank you all for doing that. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilder.
Again, just thank you for all the way we communicate with our citizens. I think that is so important and the proper word is public engagement, and that's the biggest thing with our citizens, we want to know about how we communicate with them so we can know whether there's a situation going like a COVID-19 or whatever, whatever the next issue is in our community. So thank you for making sure our citizens are informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, my suggestion is that we stop the budget walkthrough here, and we move on to your regular meeting, and we will pick up with external service providers when we meet again to work on the budget on April 7th. Next Tuesday is the proposed public hearing, is the budget, is the, next week is the Budget and Sewer Rate Increase Public Hearing.
All right, thank you. And so we will go with roll call right now, thank you very much. I'm going to give everybody the opportunity right now, start with Councilmember Wright.
I just want to applaud the city for everything that they've been doing, which is a mammoth amount, both certainly online and real person, to keep city functions not just responsive to sort of community concerns, but also functioning sort of at business as usual, making sure that refuse to, you know, pickup is happening on schedule, our streets are safe, our homes are safe, so I just really, really appreciate all the incredible work our city team is doing to make this community safe and healthy. So thank you all very much.
Councilmember Wilder.
Again, nothing extra, other than I just want to appreciate our city employees for the work they're doing in our community, especially during the budget process, process, I really can appreciate what our citizens, our employees do for the city. I'm just always so amazed, I remember last year we had a plumbing issue on our street, and the city works were there like 12 o'clock at night, working on a plumbing issue on our street, and I'm just so amazed at all the work that our citizens, our employees do for to keep our city running. When I'm home in the bed, they continue to keep our city running, and when the budget process comes, I can really see what every department does and really appreciate all the hard work that they do to keep our citizen the way it is, city the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I have no additional matters. I do echo what's been said so far about our city, our employees, and the citizens dedicating themselves to follow what everyone knows they should do in order to deal with the current crisis.
Thank you. Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple, a couple things. I just received an email from the Virginia First Cities. I'm on the executive committee for the Board of Directors of the Virginia First Cities. There is an emergency called Board Meeting on Thursday of the executive committee, and there's a series of proposals that they've laid out that they will send to, that they will send to the governor. What I've done is I've forwarded that request to Mr. Verchek and asked him for her comments, and Madam Mayor, I'll get with you if you'd like, and we can kind of discuss it a little bit before the meeting, and then I'll, I guess I'll speak during the meeting or as we go through that. But, so I will talk to you about that a little bit later. Like many people, we're all struggling with the pandemic and how we're individually, how we're managing it amongst our families and amongst our friends, having children at home when we're not expecting them to be home, working from home if you can work at all, and how that affects us all in all. I say this, and I've been, as an engineer, I like data, and I've been watching the numbers very closely from both the CDC and the Virginia Partner of Health, and you know, I really think there's hope. I think there's hope, and you see the numbers, and in the U.S., we've had, as far as I can tell on the CDC website, a declining number of new cases on a daily basis for the past four or five days. And in Lynch, in Virginia, excuse me, in Virginia, it seems to be we have a declining number of cases for the past two days, maybe. So that's, to me, that's hopeful, that speaks that what we're doing is working, that practicing the social distancing is an effective policy, and I hope we will continue to do it and get this thing down to, you know, where China is, with no new cases per day. So I am cautiously optimistic that it is working, and I hope that all Lynchburg citizens work hard and continue to work hard to make this a successful cessation, hopefully, of the pandemic. Also, I've enjoyed supporting, as other people have said, various restaurants, and I commend the business owners that are really trying to figure out how to do business in a different way, and I'm just really impressed by all of them. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Perro. Councilmember Hagelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just, I guess, as we go through this and we realize things, what I want to do is thank our folks at home, and thank the businesses that are working hard and having 100% decline in income overnight. I mean, that's very, very difficult. Folks that run businesses, that it's their baby that they've run for a long time, and it's shot, and it's gone. I, as we go through this budget, I do hope that we recognize, both recognize their peril, and as we come up with the budget and we look at utilizing the spending of resources, that we really make some good strides to say, we got to cut out what is nonessential in government. You know, a lot of these people that run businesses are very essential, doesn't matter what type of business that is. I got my hair cut today, which is a very essential service. It's essential for me to have, and it's essential for the person that makes the money to feed their families, it's essential for them. And so when we say, you know, I think it's troubling when we hear leaders say certain things are nonessential. I mean, that's, that's not a good message to our citizens, not a good message to our businesses. I thank them. I thank them that they're here, I hope that they'll put their boots back on, just like we did, you know, in times of trouble coming out of the Great Depression, what we did in World War II, what we did through 9/11. We'll pull our boots back up and get back to work and make this, the freedoms that we have in this country, we'll appreciate them that much more. Yeah, I just, I do hope and encourage them, it's troubling, and I want to see us continue to thrive.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Thank you. I also want to thank our city's leadership and for the responsiveness and the leadership that they've taken during this time, and I also want to thank the Lynchburg City School System and the leadership that Dr. Edwards has exhibited in making sure that all these young children get all the food that they need. In five days, they delivered 11,000 meals, and they're using the bus drivers and the people that work in the kitchens to effect this, and I think they really deserve a big pat on the back. And I also want to say that I hope that we don't become complacent and that our citizens continue to take this very seriously and do what we're supposed to do according to CDC and the recommendations by our leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I will, in this roll call with my comments, earlier this afternoon, I released a press release statement that I will be reading right now. First of all, I want the residents in this community to know that at no time did I or the city manager endorse having the students return to Liberty University's campus or any of the other college or university campuses in our community. In fact, it is quite the opposite. When we asked President Falwell to close his campus, he explained that he had to remain open for on-campus international students who had not gone home, some lab classes, and the School of Aviation. President Falwell also noted that the university would be moving to an online platform for instruction. After receiving this information, I thanked the presidents of all the area colleges and universities for their decisions to close or limit access to their campuses in a March 16th press release. I was very surprised and disappointed to later learn of President Falwell's most recent decision to allow students back on campus. We are in the midst of a public health crisis. I am concerned for the students, faculty, and employees at Liberty University, and I am also very concerned for the residents of the Lynchburg community. Liberty University is an important part of this community. However, I believe it was a reckless decision to bring students back on campus at this time and in the community. It is unfortunate that President Falwell chose to not keep his word to us and to this community. COVID-19 is much bigger than one person's decisions, and the community cannot dwell on this one issue. I am pleading with the Lynchburg community to take this pandemic seriously. The only way we can get a handle on this and flatten the curve of this disease is to follow the guidelines set forth by the Virginia Health Department and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. I caution you to not panic, but to be diligent in following the widely published guidelines on how to stem the tide of the disease, including wash your hands, practice social distancing, stay at home if you are sick, cover your mouth and nose if you cough or sneeze, limit your trips out, and stay home if you can. I also encourage people to call elderly neighbors or friends to check on their well-being and needs. This time is difficult for everyone. We must all practice patience, remain calm. We must all practice patience, remain calm, follow the CDC guidelines, and exercise self-responsibility. This is not about politics or who is right or wrong. This is about life and death. Every member of this community is important, from the youngest to the oldest. If we work together while staying apart, we will make it through. I thank everyone who has taken seriously all of the recommendations and who thinks about community first, your families, and the self-responsibility that we all have in this pandemic moment. Now, thank you for that. We will continue our city council meeting of March 24th, beginning right now. This is the regular meeting for March 24th. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into two sections, consent agenda and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I was scheduled to do the, to do the invocation and the pledge allegiance. I'd requested we at least do the invocation tonight.
Well, and we can do both.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's stand for our invocation. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you'll please join me in bowing your heads. We come tonight, oh God, recognizing what an honor it is to serve this community by representing our citizens on city council. Please offer help and comfort to those citizens in our city, region, Commonwealth, and country affected by COVID-19. Please provide our public, please provide our public and private sector leaders with wisdom and clarity of mind during these trying times. Please keep our first responders and medical professionals safe and help them manage the stress during this pandemic. We seek your wisdom on high and ask as we give our full attention to each agenda item and to those that speak to us in these chambers, that your spirit lead our decisions. May the outcome of this meeting be a blessing to our city and bring glory unto you. In the name above all names, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
All right, the first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have consideration of approving the minutes of the February 18th meeting and consideration of approving the minutes of the February 25th meeting? May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion, I will go by a roll call vote. Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Wilder, Vice Mayor Dolan, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Perrow, Councilmember Hegelsohn, and I. Thank you. Next is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Number five, consideration of approving the attached resolution requesting VDOT to increase the official city street lane mileage for reimbursement of highway maintenance funds for fiscal year 2021. And staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Newland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council, this is a routine situation that we have to do for VDOT, which, when the city adds roads or improves roads and increase the lane mileage, we request them to add it into the system, and then we will get paid air maintenance money per year on the lane miles that are added. This year, we've got four different sections. One is a completely new road, which is Liberty Mountain Drive, that was extended from the existing of the last phase all the way to Oddfellas Road, and then a small segment on Logan's Lane, segments on Oddfellas Road that is resulting of the Oddfellas Road interchange, and a little bit on Woods Ferry Road where we increased the laneage there in front of Heritage High School. It's a total of 2.21 additional lane miles, and with the current approved lane mileage rate, the addition is roughly 28,000 and some change.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
It did not.
No, I was just going to make the motion that we approve as presented.
All right, the motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion, Councilmember Wright or Councilmember Perrow?
No, ma'am.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank you. And we will now have a voice vote again.
Aye.
All right. Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Newland. Motion passes. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the May 1, 2017 law enforcement regional mutual aid agreement. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and this is Mr. Erwin.
Counsel, you know, for many years, the local, Virginia, central Virginia cities, towns, counties, and Sheriff's Department have entered into a regional mutual aid law enforcement agreement that allows us to, the localities, to share resources when they're needed. Counsel last approved an agreement, this agreement, on May 1, 2017. There are 15 participating localities and sheriffs. However, as a result of last year's elections, we have new sheriffs in Appomattox, in Bedford, in Campbell County. So it's necessary to approve an amendment to the agreement to add those names. Unlike localities, when a sheriff leaves office, it's a brand-new entity, and they have to enter into the agreement. So the terms of the agreement that city council previously approved in 2017 are not being changed. We're just amending it to add the names of the new sheriffs.
Thank you, Mr. Erwin. Is there any further discussion? Any questions?
I've moved the resolution to second.
All right, thank you. The motion has been moved in second, and I will offer a roll call vote again, starting with Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you. And I also on that vote. Next is consideration of adopting an ordinance, confirming the declaration of a local emergency and disaster for the city of Lynchburg, and implementing certain emergency procedures for public meetings and public hearings to ensure the continuity of city government. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and again, this is Mr. Erwin. Thank you.
Counsel, local governments are facing difficult times these days. The things that the law says we should do, hold public meetings, allow the public to attend, health officials are telling us that we shouldn't do. Last week, the Attorney General confirmed that unfortunately, even in an emergency situation, there's nothing in the Freedom of Information Act that allows governments to hold public meetings through electronic means, except to discuss, you know, emergency items. There's no provision to hold those meetings to discuss routine business like the approval of the budget, zoning matters, and other things. You know, however, there is a section in the state code that allows a local government to adopt a continuity of government ordinance to ensure the continued operations of government during an emergency. That provision of the state code may trump the requirements in the Freedom of Information Act for public meetings and allow local governing bodies and other boards and commissions to hold meetings through electronic means if that becomes necessary. So, the attached ordinance, it is a continuity of government ordinance that says if necessary, the city will dispense from its normal requirements. It will hold, the city, its boards and commissions will hold meetings electronically if, in the opinion of counsel, becomes necessary to do that in order to continue the council's business. Nobody is 100% sure that this will work, but the Attorney General has advised, and local government attorneys have all considered, that this is our best option if we would get to the point where we would decide we need to, to do that, to have this ordinance in place. So, it is being presented for city council's consideration. I would like to offer one amendment to it in paragraphs B and D, where it says, city council and the city's other boards and commissions. After that, to add the phrase, including the Lynchburg School Board. There is no provision in the state code for school boards to adopt a continuity of government ordinance. So, in order for, to try to cover the school board, if it would feel it should switch to electronic means, we want to let them piggyback off of the city's ordinance. While the ordinance does say city council and other city boards and commissions, I would like to ask to add the Lynchburg City School Board specifically so there's no doubt that we're approving them operating by electronic means also during this, this time of crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Erwin. Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve as Mr. Erwin has recommended with the adjusted language, including the school board.
All right. Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Any further discussion from you?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan. No further discussion? Okay, thank you. Any further, Councilmember Perrow?
Just technical questions, Mr. Erwin. I'm thinking specifically on the Housing Authority. We've got an upcoming board meeting and an upcoming finance committee meeting. Those meetings are currently scheduled to be held. If we need, if we have work to do, those meetings are scheduled to be held. The question is, how do we do that? This, the way I read item, I guess it was item C, it says the boards and commissions of the city would have the authorization to conduct the meeting electronically. But what's, I'm unclear on what the trigger for that is, and it also seems in conflict, conflict with the Attorney General's ruling that you still had to have a quorum present in the room. Or did I misread that opinion?
No, that opinion was correct. They, again, but the, the first part of the, excuse me, Attorney General's opinion focused on the Freedom of Information Act and said there's no provision in the act for waiver of the requirement for that a quorum of the body be physically present. But the last portion of the opinion, it's only a couple paragraphs said, but you do have the continuity of government ordinance that says notwithstanding any other provision of law. So the argument can be made that that provision, notwithstanding any other provision of law, the government can adopt an ordinance to provide for the continuity of governmental business, that that could trump the provision in the Freedom of Information Act. So...
So by the city enacting this ordinance, therefore, the Housing Authority or the Airport Commission or the Economic Development Authority could meet electronically because the city's in a condition of emergency right now?
They could use this as the basis to, to say, you know, we now have the authority, given the city has adopted this ordinance, to meet electronically. Again, there's no guarantee this is work. We've, we'll work. Nobody's ever done this before, but this is our best option to try to provide some basis if public bodies would decide we do need to move to electronic meetings for public health reasons.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to push this a little bit further. So what is, what is the recommendation, then, of the city? Are we going to continue to meet in person? Are we going to move to electronically? Or, or we're going to reserve the right, or this kind of, I know this does reserve the right for us to go to electronic, but what's the plan for the city going forward? As far as we can tell, right this minute?
Yes, certainly it's council's pleasure, but my expectation and our plans is that we continue in this format until we can't continue in this format, should that arise, and that we have our budget public, and our budget public hearing and our sewer rate public hearing next week, because we can also take, and we'll have to work on this, on taking comments telephonically and in writing and in person, certainly. And we, we can manage that.
Would your office, in conjunction of Mr. Erwin's, maybe provide a little bit of guidance to the board, to the point of contact with the boards and commissions as to how the city plans to implement this and how it should be used?
Sure. Yes. This afternoon, late this afternoon, I received the local government attorneys formed a task force last Friday to come up with some guidance for localities and sent that out today. And that includes guidelines on how to conduct meetings electronically. If a public body decides it's going to hold an electronic meeting, it's going to have to have procedures in place so the public can view it, so that the public can participate if participation is required, like a public hearing to offer comments. So, do have those guidelines. You'll have to, a public body who wishes to hold an electronic meeting will certainly have to do the same things it would normally do, give notice of the meeting, preserve a record, you know, of the meeting, all the things that the Freedom of Information, Information Act normally requires. So I will get those guidelines to the city manager tomorrow. We can use those. I think we would, that because the Housing Authority is an independent entity, the Economic Development Authority is an independent entity, the school board is an independent entity, they will have to make their own decisions. The city doesn't have the authority to tell them, this is how you do things. Each of those bodies will have to make the decision, do we want to go to electronic meetings? And do we have the ability to, the technology to in place that we can meet the requirements for public viewing, public participation, if we decide we want to go into those arrangements? I would thank some of our city boards and commissions. For example, the Historic Preservation Commission, you know, might be best to hold off, trying to hold meetings during this period of, of time. They may not have the, or the city might not be able to provide the resources for them to hold electronic meetings.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking about that, sure, maybe we've got theoretically, or theoretically, or actually we've got the authority to do it, but what's best practice? And I think your information that you've just discussed would be very helpful. And also, maybe at the appropriate time, do a, a press release so that all the press knows how, how it'll work going forward, too.
I'll talk with the clerk of council. That's how to get that information out to boards and commissions.
Thanks a lot.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, this does have practical utility for us. The transparency is pretty high on my list of priorities, and I have no objection to approve this just as a tool in our tool belt. But before we, if, if the mindset is, we're not going to adopt this and implement this unless things deteriorate to a level that is far below where we are now as a community, I, I think it's good that it be there. But before we actually engage in electronic meetings, we need to have a very specifically articulated rationale for doing it so as to, to find compelling public interest and not just our convenience.
Thank you. Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with Councilmember Nelson in, in having this tool in our tool belt. Sometimes when we have a tool, we have a tendency to use it. So I don't even want to have, have this tool in our tool belt until it becomes a compelling reason. So, because lots of times when we have a tool belt, a tool in our tool belt, we like to use it. So, I don't see a compelling reason now. I don't see, you know, and if there is a compelling reason, we can actually meet in order to then adopt and not to mention the fact that our city attorney said this isn't even, probably even doable. So, if it's not most likely doable, but it's the best possible tool that there is, let's not even do this, and, and let's not just have this. So I'll be voting against this. I, I think what we are elected to represent the citizens, we can't have meetings that they're excluded from. We can't have meetings where we can specifically say, you're not physically present. You know, lots of these things, it's come about because of a person can declare an emergency. It looks like whereas, whereas you have the beginning of this, if the emergency is declared, then lots of other things can be done. So, I, I just don't like, you know, having that, you know, one person declares an emergency, then lots of changes happen. I don't think that is needed at this time, and I would urge you to vote against this at this time. And, and vote on it if, if it ever does come to a point where we need it.
Counsel, I would say I do think it's important, and I do think council should vote on this tonight. Usually, I try to defer to council, but we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know if some of the council members may have to self-quarantine, may be exposed, and might not be able to come together to vote on this at a later date. I certainly hope we don't have to get to the point where we would use electronic meetings, but I do think it's important to adopt the ordinance tonight, so we will have it available in case we, we need it. I don't think just having adopted it is going to cause council to run around and trample on people's rights, but I think it's something we do need to be prepared for, and things are changing so quickly. I think it needs to be in place, and even if city council doesn't want to utilize... if city council doesn't want to utilize it, the school board may wish to. We have to think of giving, you know, the school board the authority to maybe do some things as well. So I would ask council to please adopt this ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Erwin. Councilmember Wright?
Just so I'm clear, this, this provision would sunset with the, once the crisis concludes. Is that right?
This provision can at most only last six months. If it, if, if the crisis goes on for longer than that, it would have to be re-adapted.
We would need to revisit and, and re-vote on it.
And if the governor declares that the crisis and the disaster is over, then this would automatically end. This could, this is only in place during such time as there is a disaster. So if things get better and the governor lifts it, then it would automatically end. It will end in six months regardless, and even if things haven't improved by then, it would have to be extended at that point.
I think that this is a reasonable provision to take, given the uncertainty of these, frankly, wild times that we're in. And as long as, Councilmember Nelson said, as long as we are making provision that the public is notified and can participate in some format in, in the meetings of our boards and commissions and even city council meetings, I think it's entirely reasonable and appropriate that we adopt this ordinance tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
Yes, again, I think this is, as Councilmember Nelson said, it's good to have it in our tool belt. Because the times are changing so fast from day to day, you just don't know what's going to happen. I mean, from one day, we say we can have 50. Next day, the president, we could have 10 in our center. So it's just, it's changing so daily. So I think it's important to have some kind of mechanism in place, be prepared, because we don't know what's going to happen today, much less tomorrow. So I think it's good to have it. So I will be voting for this, just so we have an opportunity to have another, we have some tools at our accessibility if, if the case does get much worse.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, oh, Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Haggelson brings up some really good points. You can see how this could be abused. I believe that there are appropriate safeguards written into, as Mr. Erwin explained, the state lang, the Commonwealth's language about this, as well as the specificity of, specificity of this language that deals with COVID-19 and references in, I think, a multiple, multiple locations. I think that mitigates any, any challenges, but, but I think if it was broad, if it was more broad, I would be very concerned about it because you could see how, you know, a person, if, if there were people with ill intent, which heaven forbid, they're ever, they're, hopefully will never, will be, but a manager could declare an emergency, a city council could, maybe a faction of the city council could convene in secret and start making changes. So having the safeguard, safeguards in the ordinance, I think is very helpful. And the fact that it's of limited duration gives me comfort to vote for it.
Thank you. There's no further discussion or thought. I will now call for a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Haggelson.
No.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
And I for my vote. Thank you very much. And with no further business, we adjourn. Thank you.